Now I have on Thursday night. So he like, I go get, pick up dinner, he like eats it. My time to get to answer, he's asleep in the truck.
It was a long day.
Yeah. He's loving it. Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready.
I am with you. That was fun. I'm gonna call. I'm gonna call and order the regular September board meeting for Solon County School District. Uh, it is the mission of these Solon County Schools to engage each, engage every student in opportunities to learn, meet and grow. Uh, Chris, do you want?
Uh, yes, well, here Rockholtz.
Here.
Pleska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Coons arriving at five thirty-one and our um, student representative, Ben Chapman is here too. So all present.
Cassie, do you want to introduce the pledge ending?
Why was?
What's wrong?
I like my attendance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, neither this law nor liberty and justice.
Welcome, visitors and representatives of the press. Okay, we got part of the visitor.
You do.
And I'm assuming our press guy has been to uh, this is what online because he said he was gonna be here when I talked to him on Friday last week. So um, we have one registered speaker.
We do, we have a gentleman named Jeff Miller. I believe you have kids in the district as well. All right, if you'd like to go ahead and come on up and uh, you have five minutes or you don't have. Yeah.
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 You're a long one.
And you do have five minutes, so I'll let you know when that passed.
To start off, I thought this was a little bit involved with the Lakeview Construction Manager at Risk, that's of course why I'm here. Um, kinda wanna put my two cents in on what I know pros and cons. I, I work in the construction industry. We do several construction manager at risk projects every year for both public and private owners. Um, not always the biggest fan of them. Um, the biggest issue that I see on the ones that we've experienced is um, when the projects are not fully designed and every bid packages, all the bid packages are not released at the same time. If there's a big package released for early work, middle work and later work, if they're not all released at the same time, there's a lot of coordination issues that get slipped in those gaps because work has already started, scope has changed, and then somebody else is trying to bid something that there's onsite information that they're not getting, that they're bidding something off of truly a document and not off of what is going on on the site previously. So you kinda need to have all those parties onboard at day one. It is my, my biggest con of the Construction Manager at Risk. Because there's so much information that gets transpired in those early bid packages that doesn't always get transferred accurately or completely into a second set of bid documents. Um, I, I also understand the, the complexity of trying to remodel and revamp the school when you're trying to move classrooms, do different things, you know, because it's not something that can be performed over a, a summer closed session. Um, so there is some benefits from that. Um, there, there's also cost involved in it. Um, it's not a huge project. It's kind of on the borderline small side of a Construction Manager at Risk type um, project. I was having some other colleagues that live in other districts that do the same thing I do, but um, clear cream, when they did theirs, they looked at a Construction Manager at Risk. And they actually found a retired engineer that had worked around building construction, and they hired him as just an independent consultant to go to the project meetings, to, to be the owner's rep, but not have to incur all the costs of hiring the construction management firm. Somebody that has that construction background, somebody that knows what's going on, invested in the community because they're from here, that is wanting to donate their time, they're still getting paid for it, but something that's not their full-time job. They're doing it because they want to, they enjoy it, they aren't getting compensated for it, but they're really truly gonna look out for your best interest. And I know there's individuals in this meeting that would gladly fill or, or entertain that option.
Questions at this time?
Are you volunteering yourself as a?
If, if, if the, if the board decides to go to Construction Manager at Risk, I would definitely volunteer myself to vet out the contractors that put in their proposals and, and that type of stuff. Because I think God, we were here when Portland Arts Theater went on and that whole thing and
Yes.
that project, that construction manager did not do a very good job. And the last thing they wanna do is go down that road again.
Yeah, and hey, that was gonna be my follow-up question is, you know, we, we, we did not have the best experience with a Construction Manager. Give a perspective on differences between Construction Manager at Risk versus, versus Construction Manager, because that's, the last one was a Construction Manager with, with no risk.
Right.
And that's the only reason why we, we would never enter, even entertain that exploration of one if it was still no risk, because we didn't have very good experience. Now that they're at risk, it's like, well, that's different. We're not necessarily sold, but we wanna learn more. That's kinda where I think the board is at right now.
I know, and I, I would say this, you say people in the community would be interested, but well, I would love to know those names and I would love to be able to.
I haven't talked to him, but I would think Steve Lee would be one. I know he's got the experience, I know he has the background, I know he has the knowledge, he is retired. I haven't actually spoke with him, but I mean, he's been in the community for, since before we came to the community. I, I think it'd be, it'd be worth entertaining the, the, the call or the, the option, you know? I, I'm sure there's others, but he's the first one that comes to mind.
Yeah, and we were pretty fortunate when uh, we had Jim Power on the board, he's in that construction world. I mean, to us, you know what I do for a living and what everybody else, we don't have a, a footprint in that industry, and that's why I think it's great to have community involved in, and we will take, I mean, we're open uh, to suggestions because, you know, at this point, we wanna do what's right. We wanna make sure we're being responsible and, you know, uh, that's why we invented this, and I think we've kind of been slower at that to make sure what is the best decision, but your timing trade comes in.
And, and so we have done Construction Manager at Risk for private stuff, but we're usually just bidding the Construction Manager, right? We're not in the front end. Um, we do a lot more on the front end with Construction Manager at Risk for public, for the university. So we get on the front end, help them build budgets, help them review drawings, clarify drawings, clarify scope, and all that stuff on the public side. We don't get to do that on the private side as much. The problem with the Construction Manager at Risk on the public side is there is what you call an at-risk, but it's more of an open check. It's more of an open check, what can you think? Because the Construction Manager at Risk gets their fee, right? That's it. And then all the subcontractor numbers come in, the owner then writes them a change order for the lowest, most responsible bid on top of that. So there's not really the risk that is inferred by the name when it's on the public side. Because all their, all the Construction Manager at Risk is getting the contract for is basically their services and their fees. And then as the bids come in, then they get change words to accommodate for the work that is then gonna be performed. And that's when I, when I said at the beginning is to have all the bid scopes bidding at one time. So then you truly are putting in an at-risk involvement in it, right? Because they have everybody onboard day one. Where if you only, what if a portion of them, just using crazy number, right? It's five million dollars. You've been a million dollars for the workout, you've been a million dollars for the workout, you've been a million dollars workout, you got two million dollars left and your final bid's come in and they're free. What do you, what do you do then? Cause you're already this far into it and you gotta bust on the tail end, you're trying to come up with the deltas through the font it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and that's where, and unfortunately, because of how fast everything needs to get built and everyone wants things done, the um, public sector, that happens way too often. The project needs to get started, they don't have all the documents done, so the third, four, five, six, ten packages get bid. But the elevator's not bid yet. Well, but you need the elevator information over here, but it's not bid over here, so people are asking questions, waiting and it's causing delays because there's information that you need from the second bid package group or the third or fourth.
I think the other bit to it late visa is a little bit of a fear, like for everybody would be, when you get into the private model. Well, yeah, the remodel, what else is gonna come? We don't know.
And so that's another thing that really, so we did the Construction Manager at Risk for Call Community, their five-six building. And the Construction Manager at Risk really slows the communication down between owner and contractor. Especially on a remodel contractor's question, he needs an answer, he's gotta file paperwork, he's got some of, come up, Construction Manager, they've gotta review it, and then they submit it to the owner. So it, it, it slows that, that process down, and when you're trying to fit a lot of work in short windows, it can really snowball delays down the road.
Makes sense.
All good points, go on. Charge Jane and Adam and Davis to dig into this more. We got, we definitely find, but the, well, the first question we've got is just where our window is, so we gotta figure out when, when the decision has to be made, so that's kind of the the first thing is to work back on when those projects will start, so um, you know.
We had time, we were thinking that window might be this spring, so we got plenty of time to just be methodical and, and, and really dig into it. Go ahead, Tom.
You obviously work in the public sector. We don't have all our money to start. Uh, we don't have all our money to start.
Right.
Right, you know what I mean, and so that's sometimes why projects end up how they are. It's because you, you know, I mean, you're like, okay, we're waiting for the money so we can start this project, so we're waiting for the, you know, I mean, as the bond was told, so, you know, I, I mean, obviously you bring up great questions and, and I appreciate it, you know, we did not care for how it went last time, so the ones that was, that were on the board, or at least were on the board when the decision was made, have some like buyer's remorse, and so um, I think anytime you say Construction Manager, I don't care what you put at the end of it.
It makes us a little.
Yeah, I don't remember who was on the board when that happened, but I guess, yeah.
One of us is gloomy, one of us is regretting. I, I got off the board when the decision was made to uh, terminate them. So. Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's always good to get insight from members of the community, because as Adam and the kid, we don't have
In their field of expertise.
We don't have every expertise.
Yeah, if you need some earplugs, let me know. I said, if you need your earplugs, let me know.
I just wanted to see you guys on that.
A quick profile. Okay. Uh, celebration of achievements, Davis?
Yeah, well, early in the year, so we don't have a, I mean, we're doing all of our testing right now. Um, and that's, I think the elementary was at data wall, their testing's done, working on data wall, you also, so uh, early in the tent, we've got some grade levels that are really surprising us uh, in a good way, so which is good. But what I wanted to focus our celebrations on was the guy sitting to my left here, Josh, who has um, taken on the task of leading Lakeview um, to start the school year. Uh, what we didn't wanna have happen is start the school year October twelfth when Holly returns. Um, and that's a date earlier than what she first anticipated, but I think she's missing being, being here with the team and at Lakeview. So she returns August, October twelfth, and what we didn't wanna have, our fear was our momentum wouldn't begin until October twelfth with that vacancy, you know, with that absence, but Josh has stepped in and, and gotten them uh, really rolling and, and things are going well at Lakeview and, and uh, he's communicating with Holly as often as they need to communicate, still respecting her time at home and things like that, but um, we've talked about kind of a re-entry plan, but when she does come back, it's gonna be a, a pretty good handoff and, and we'll continue that momentum um, that, that Josh has. And the, and the, and the staff down there has really done a good job of getting the year going because, you know, it's only a hundred and eighty day school year, thirty-six weeks, and so we, you know, by the time we lose, we, we don't, we didn't wanna lose the first four, five, six, six weeks of school because now we're down to thirty. So we got a lot to cover in that short amount of time, so wanna celebrate Josh's efforts and commitment to making sure Lakeview gets off to a great start.
You did a great job the first day. The buses were anomaly on time.
Yep, well, these first few weeks, all about routines and expectations.
And there were no screaming kids that I saw.
No, that was actually a pretty smooth start.
I left you cookies and you didn't have to give them off to the students.
Yep.
Um.
It ended up.
I'd just like to say, that's just a testament, Josh, to your heart that you have for kids and making sure that, you know, that, that you keep them as a hopeful point always, and so.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Everything that you do, it just shows, it doesn't go like those.
Thanks. No, it's, it's actually been telling people and Davis, it's been really good for me, coming out of central office and back to a building and and kinda now, I mean, I, I wasn't a principal role before, but it's been several years, so just trying to tap back into my knowledge and experience then, and then collaborating with Mel and, and the others, and just kinda working back into, okay, this is, this is what this is, and it's busy and I'm exhausted at the.
It's a different level, it's a different energy.
Yes, it's a whole different level, yeah.
You wanna try a couple weeks to high school that? Oh, middle school, middle school, you're gonna go back down. Every morning you can hang out with Mark.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And I can just speak from boots on the ground, um, while I spoke, I live you just at the start of school, like, your message was basically, you know, hear from kids, the kids are important, make sure you take care of yourself.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and, and um, that was well received and appreciated, and not, and not everybody does that, but you know, I mean, it's uh, sometimes we, we have expectations and we, and we feel that way, but we don't always articulate that, and and so I, I know that was appreciated too, so.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Any other celebrations, someone on, celebrate?
Well, good for you guys.
Yeah. Adam, Adam had a great deflected catch on the sideline, I wonder if he caught that?
No, it was soft hands.
It's fun, the football player stepped on the way so he could catch it, you know?
Even watching it on uh, on TV, it was, it was pretty exciting too, so, even though I wasn't there, but it was.
I will not be sad not to have to walk the long distance into the stadium ever again.
Well, there's bathrooms on that side, there's the updated. That was my very first, go there.
And you, last time on that field, you know, the victory. District reports, focus on learning, all this site-based therapists. Josh, since you handed out the paperwork, I'm assuming you're gonna talk about this.
Yep. So this was a message that was sent out a few weeks ago, um, Davis and I kinda talked a little bit about it and um, just a kind of an overview of, hey, here's everything that, under that wellness pillar that, on our strategic plan that we're really working on and working hard at. Um, and I, I just thought, you know, the first one uh, on this document is the Tanager based or Tanager School Based Therapy, um, and that is rolling, how we are rolling right now. Um, it, it was kind of a slow roll the first couple of weeks, and I was getting a little nervous about referrals and not having enough. Um, because if we don't have enough, then we get charged, cause it's all insurance-based and all that, but um, our, our buildings have been really doing a great job of identifying those kids uh, and families who may need just some additional support, um, be, for whatever reason, and so um, currently, at the end of last week, we had seventeen active cases with twelve kind of um, waiting just to get paperwork back and information back from families. Um, the full caseload for our, our school-based man, or school-based therapy is about thirty, we're gonna, we're gonna be pretty close to hitting that probably by the end of this week or into next week, so we're, we're excited because we feel really strongly that we have the right kids getting the help and support that they need. Um, and it's, I, it was really positively received, I tried, did a trial run of just shooting something out to Lakeview families, and immediately the next day, the school counselor Paige Niemeyer was getting emails and phone calls left and right about interest of, of it during this, so uh, just we're really happy with this, um, the, our, our therapist is still kinda working out bugs, I think, in her schedule, just to make sure she's meeting everyone's needs, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna get there, so just really excited about that, that opportunity.
This is the one that had coordinated uh, social media with, with them, where they, they're a couple posts that are just themselves to community on social media, I think Davis, that's what you said, this is the one that, cause it was the same day as the letter went out, it was just uh, hi, this is who I am, and if you got interest.
It was staff meeting, but I don't know if it was public.
There was, there was one on social media, on the community group, and it basically just said, reach out to the school principal or counselor.
It could be.
It was the same, Davis and I talked about that, the same thing, cause I congratulated him, I'm like, oh, it's cool, David shared the email message, it went out, and I got home on social media, I saw, it was just, it was just an introduction that said, we're, we're working with the schools, if you, if you're, can be in support, reach out to the principal or the counselor, so.
Yeah, I might have pushed, I might have, we might have pushed something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, it's been a few weeks, yeah.
It all runs together.
They all run together.
Uh, behavior interventionists, I just wanted to highlight that, um, Mel and myself, um, Shauna Schmidt and Jolene Kennedy, um, who are both the behavior interventionists at, you know, at Lakeview and um, SIS, have really been, I think, knocking it out of the park. Uh, I can just tell the difference at, at Lakeview, uh, obviously, just the climate and culture of just the being, having someone that's just available to respond and using very specific strategies. I know both Shauna and Jolene are actually helping coach um, other associates as well as teachers and using behavior intervention um, language and supporting kids and thinking differently how they should respond to kids and it's just, it, it's been busy, I know it's been really busy, but it's also been uh, contributed to helping keep a, a positive and, and calm culture in our buildings, I think, so um, balancing on that.
I was just gonna say, I think even from this, the teaching and the staff end to just the open-mindedness of, of everyone, because as we've done this, we've had to kinda troubleshoot and say, this is, you know, what we need for, this is not that role, and just kinda clarify that, and everybody's been open to that, I think it's been similarly.
We've started to roll out Carisolus, we, we've had one training round, I think we'll probably get another one up for other administrators and um, identify if there's anyone else that, that would need access to these accounts, but in this message really sent out, there's a link in here specifically for Solon that families can just click on, and it really is, it, it, it's to help identify um, other areas um, providers that maybe were, families aren't aware of or were aware of, um, that's the purpose of this, this sys, um,
Service.
service is to provide support to families and then they help find um, providers for us, so, and then this is in partnership with Grantwood AEA, they're, they're, I think they're paying for the majority of this um, as kind of a pilot to see how this works, this is newer uh, in Iowa. Um, so it's just another service and support for, for our kids and our families. And of course, we've had this partnership with Johnson County Mobile Crisis the last few years. Um, our counselors use them quite a bit for, and this is really for those situations where there is a crisis situation, uh, emergency situation where maybe a, a student has mentioned suicide or families are just, it's, things are falling apart, then they just need someone to reach out to to get help. So it's just another service and support. Um, Character Strong, we're rolling that out district-wide, uh, Mel, I'll let you just kinda give a brief overview of that.
Um, so I think Lakeview is waiting until Holly comes back and really starting to have it. It is so comprehensive in the support that we need for our morning meeting, where we're checking in the kids, giving them strategies on how to regulate when they have high, strong emotions, um, helping with the guidance lessons, of course, providing that structure um, and just really embedding it throughout our entire day, so we even have a morning announcement that's there. Um, we do our Spartan squads at SIS and all of our activities are coming from there. Um, it's been so well received by staff and it's making an impact on students too. Um, just hearing them say, I need some self-time, which is part of our teach-to-do work, but then also having character strong building into where are those strategies to take some time for ourselves. Um, and teaching them how to just manage their emotions and recognize those emotions, so it's been just really, really good. I know middle school's been doing it even before now and there's so many things there, it's, it's amazing, I think it's even helped, I mean, from my end with Heather and myself talking from the counseling point of view, like just strengthening that relationship too, and the connection between what's happening with teachers, and how can we support kids, and then using that offer, think about school-based therapy referrals and things too, so it's really the complete package.
I know Zach would compliment it, the, I mean, it's the first time they've had a comprehensive curriculum to support the work at the, at the high school, which it's really struggled with, and I think the teachers are really embracing it and kids, I think, are responding, I don't know, Ben, you, have you been a part of any of those lessons?
Yeah, I mean, at first, like, everyone was a little kinda wary of it, it's like.
One more.
Yeah, but um, honestly, I think it's been like, pretty good, I mean, it's, they're, they're not like diving straight into like, like, they're not diving adverse into anything, but they're kinda like easing into it, I'd say, and that's, I think it's working pretty well, so.
Yeah.
It's, I think it's good.
Yeah, good. Cause I think, i- i- this is the first time we've had a preschool through twelfth grade um, curriculum like this to, and it, it, it's really focused on building skills for kids, so it's, it's not about social emotional learning necessarily, it really is building skills of how to to manage life uh, and, and to help support them in school, so. Yeah, those are, yeah, those are the kind of the big rocks that are sent out, and we're finding some success behind this.
Well, I think it's interesting, I mean, I only, only went four years, which always been more decided that middle health was, was a priority to us. And then we, we take a shot at the DASO, we take, you know, and we kind of work through these processes and continue to look for things and, and it's an example of uh, ways that more assess the directives, and then the administration takes those and molds them to, you know, what works for our community and and then ultimately impacts our students and families, so, you know, I probably couldn't be out here that we continue to, you know, just check the box. You know, and we continue to, um, pay and, you know, this stuff, and we're getting pretty close now, cause we don't, you know, the DASO, we we were split for a while and all sorts of weird stuff, so this is, you know, I felt during the time again, it's good.
Any other questions? Admin reports.
I'll take this one too. I'll keep this real, pretty short, last week um, we had uh, Dr. Richard Cash come to the district to, to work with uh, Kerry Coons, our tag teacher across the district, and um, Kerry had brought his name up to me last year, and as we were talking just about, we've been talking for the last couple of years, how do we, how do we improve our talented and gifted programming? How do we look at it from a, a standpoint of, of a, of a system and having structures and frameworks in place to be able to work through? Um, and we brought Dr. Cash in last week, who's a national expert, he's been in many, many districts um, supporting and consulting with them on talented and gifted programming and what that looks like, and working with those students who are gifted as well as advanced learners, as we talk about. Um, and just trying to figure out where the best place is to start with maybe some of this work. Um, I think, based on the conversation last week, um, one, he's gonna continue to work and, and kinda be a coach for Kerry throughout this year and next year um, to provide her support and, and think about things, because she's kind of the lone wolf across the district, and it's, it's sometimes hard to be in that position um, with a lot of demands and personalities and just trying to figure it out. Um, and then two, looking at supporting some of the work that the middle school has been doing uh, last year and into this year about um, student-centered learning, and he's gonna bring some of his differentiation, differentiating instruction uh, strategies to the middle school to support some of the work that they're doing in January. Um, but then um, and I was, I was talking with Mel about this the other day, some of the ideas he has about supporting kids um, at the elementary level, what does that look like? Um, because it can't always, it can't always just be a pull-out, cause I think traditionally what we've had is, yep, you're tagged, so you get twenty minutes a week and pulled out, well, that's, that's not effective. So how do we utilize, how do we create a better framework and utilize Kerry's support and knowledge um, within that framework? One of the ideas that Kerry's talked with me about um, over the years is clustering, but I never really understood what it meant, and Dr. Cash really. Over the years is clustering, but I never really understood what it meant and Dr. Cash really sat with me and her and explained exactly what it looks like. Um, it's something we're gonna explore and it's where we take. Um, a a a group of students that we identify as, hey, these kids really are are flying high, so how do we support them? All in the same classroom, and then that's where a teacher or support can. Um, go into that classroom and work just with those, that teacher and those kids. Um, while supporting other teachers and 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 kids in other ways, so there's some things that we're gonna work on this year. Um, and really establish, hopefully really establish some goals and structures and framework and we're gonna work with Mel and Holly and kind of just explore. How do we want this to look, um, moving forward at the elementary level? Yeah, of course you did.
But I think the thing that was, um, exciting to earlier is clustering is free. You know what I mean, like you can move kids in appropriate places and, um. Like, so I, I usually would trap.
That's, yeah, that's da- that's dangerous, yeah.
And so, cause we were, that's the age when you're growing up. Uh, but it's interesting, cause it's not just all high kids all together, there's a, there's a clustering of. Right, where these kids go and this is research base and this is, you know, I mean, so it's it's an interesting thing, you know, that I understand.
We're gonna, we're gonna continue to learn more about it and explore what that means.
Clustering is by like, where you are within the main, perhaps?
It's, it it really is, I mean, it could be within the domain, but it's for those kids that we identify as, hey, these. These kids, this group of kids is really gifted and talented, it could be reading, writing, math. Um, cognitively where where they are in their thinking and creating their ability to think creatively, uh, and then really developing that. Um, so then clustering would be putting that group of kids, not all, not every single kid, but it might be his example is. Let's say out of a classroom of twenty five, we got six, six kids are just really high flyers. And we want to make sure that that they have those opportunities to work together, but then the teacher also has support in that classroom. And then, and then we're looking at, okay, how do we distribute the other kids and maybe we, instead of this law, this huge continuum of. I've got, in my classroom and every single classroom, we've got really, really high kids. In my classroom, all the way down to the low, the very, very low, who really, really struggle with learning, and so now I'm trying to meet. Um, five different bands of kids, and the idea here is to narrow the band down, so maybe you're just working with. Uh, three bands of kids, maybe it's not the lowest of the low. But you, maybe you have a few struggling learners, you have some of the average kids and then you have the the higher kids, so, and.
I thought there, we, we did this at one point. We don't do, I, we don't do a lot of this now.
A lot of it is, we do a lot more balancing of kids where there is.
When we create classless at the elementary level anyway, we do a balance. Though.
No, no.
I mean, you might think like for guided reading and stuff, we do do shifting of students, just to make sure they're in the same like reading band. Yeah.
Cause right now, we, may, okay, everybody has.
But every teacher would have different levels of category. Culture right now, and that's how within the cluster.
It's, uh, it's like a cluster, it's clustering across a grade.
A grade level.
Yes, so this class, this classroom teacher would have, out of their twenty five kids, they'd have six kids who are the high flyers and then they have. Not just the six kids, but what they're, what we would do is, then we'd have, um. Um, a group of, you know, just, you know, average learners in the classroom and then maybe you have some struggling learners, but they're not like the struggle, the the. Highest struggling learners, so then you're just, you're really working with, okay, I've got this. Group of kids that I can really focus on and support, and then I've got my average kids and then maybe I've just got a small group of. Kids who's generally struggled, but not awful, and then. Then you look at, okay, how do you distribute the other kids across the other classrooms and maybe other classrooms might, we might concentrate. More, more of the struggling learners, but then we can provide addition, more support to them, whether that's additional adult support through an associate. As well as special ed teacher, again, that's something we're gonna, we're exploring and taking a look at and, um. Following what the research tells us about how how it works, so.
The way I am, I'm a simple minded man. The teacher, I do know the, the teacher's not expected to say the full names. You kind of just put sections in rooms, so the teacher has this pocket of kids that are like three to five, this pocket is two to four. With, you know what I mean, so this pocket is one to three, you know what I mean, so the teacher's differentiation isn't having to challenge every, you know what I mean? You cluster them together, but it's not, I mean, it's not just specific classrooms within.
Right. Yeah, that's a good way, I thought, yeah, I think that's a good way to describe it too.
Other questions? I've got just one thing to add, in the admin report is the, uh. Recall a year ago or so, we talked about the safety grant that the state was using some federal funds they set aside. For every school building, fifty thousand dollars, so we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars for our district. Um, it's been quite a process, they hired a firm out of, uh, Kentucky to help. From, not Kentucky, from Arkansas, to help. These are our contacts, uh, process, it's a homeland security type process, application, Sean and, uh, Pat and I met this morning. Again on it, we got some more answers and so we're close. Now to submitting it, we've got our bids and the the, what we are doing is addressing. What the Johnson County Sheriff's Department and Johnson County Emergency Management. Um, recommended from. Uh, audit that they did and walked through all of our buildings and it will really mostly focus on cameras. And additional cameras and, um, strikers or, uh, the the FOB strikers, so. Maybe an upgraded one and more doors so that we can. Uh, better monitor if a door's propped or not through these strikers. Propped open and and control on more site too, if we need to, right now, I think Brian has the own access to. Time the door downstairs, I, where we would have more access, um, through the wifi to lock and unlock and things like that too. So that's what we're working on now, besides cameras and and strikers, it would be, um, film. Uh, for the glass at, uh, intermediate school, so. Within probably the next four to six weeks, we'll, we'll finalize that, get it submitted and then we'll see about getting started on these projects.
Thanks, yes, yeah, uh, board, any updates? We haven't started a policy yet, but, you know, when you're most of policies out there, but those are ones pushed by the state that are not part of our. Yo cycle, so. Dan and I need to. Soon. Um. No, it's the ones for next year.
That's for the next board, it'll be for you guys.
Well, depends on who's on the.
Okay, fair enough.
Nobody wants to be on the. Nobody wants to be on the policy.
It's the one hundred and two hundred series, so you know, yeah, so.
Nobody wants to be on the policy committee and convince the, the torture. I think we just say he volunteered to stay.
No, I'm just gonna say this, cause it's a celebration. Ben played so well that he was blocking like two guys every night and every play and you didn't really see him. But because of that, you saw other plays after, so, it's why I love his play.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Uh, consent agenda. Anything need to get pulled out? If not, I'll indicate a motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda, motion by Coons, second, second by Alaska, present, approve the consent agenda as presented. All's in papers, you can find my saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries unanimously. Action items, uh, these are just some straggler policies that came in. Um, things seem like they make crazy when I look at them, um. Policy creates regular approval, first reading of these policies. First we approve the first reading of the board policies presented in the action items.
Second.
Second by Will, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, see if I might say aye, aye, posed. Motion carries unanimously, uh, we'll have these over second reading next month and if you're approved, we'll go back. Annual fundraisers, uh, there's a nice long list.
No, it's listed from, it's, go back, whatever, it's, it's, it has funding, it's, it's. Keep going, keep coming. There you go, I put them two different ways, yeah, there you go.
We get the, so just as a reminder, we get, uh, these are the ones that occur every year and we get down and then things that do not show up on this list get approved separately by the. Activities director, uh, on a case by case basis, um.
And I think you and I discussed this a little bit, keep in mind, some of these fundraisers, the money, money is held by the district. For instance, I think the volleyball program just did a cookie sale. And that money is held in the volleyball account here in the district. Other fundraisers listed on here, PTO, there's some booster club, that money is not held by the district.
Correct, yeah, and we we approve those in in broad swaths and so PTO and. Booster Club and Spotlight have greater discretion in terms of what they do and we. You know, our job is not to micromanage, uh, their activities, but, uh, so long as they stay in their lane, we can give you the. Uh, we'll collaboratively, um.
Things like post prom. Have to also be on here.
We can go to the high school and see, is it on there?
Continue to watch prom committee, football concessions, depending on who the member is with their list.
Should be.
There it is.
So I think the differentiation will be the prom versus the parents who do the work to put on post prom and so that is a more nebulous.
Well, I think the things that are important is historically, when this all started. We don't want entities within our district holding money that's not the district's money. So we had issues years ago where coaches left and they had a banking talent function and. We don't ever know what happened to that, and so I think those are the things that are important to make sure that. When we go through these things, the the stuff is the district's is accounting for and, uh. You know, and you rely on our activities director to, you know. What can say to be some right things on.
But I think, Cass, we could have some occasions also where people thought people were raising money on behalf of the district and they, and there was no, we had no, we have no rapid. How that was why some stuff got pulled in and the question would pop up, you know.
Well, if you ask the old townies, all the money they save to the whole part of the bill, go to the bathrooms, that will never go.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, that's the stuff we want to do, right? Well, I think, I think the other, the other thing you've got to look at is also there's, you know, there's something told by the district, there are very. Strict rules about purpose listed and yet matching them, so if you raise money for X, you have to spend money on X. We not buy X and then expect money from that, yeah, or. Raise money for X and say, oh, by the way, you know, it's just like the bond, right, we've got, we can, we can X with the bond money, is that what we told the community we were doing? We can't raise money, we can't bond and say, oh, we've got extra bonding capacity, so we want to do this extra project that we didn't tell you about. Um, and so there's very firm rules about that, you've got to be very careful on those, on those requests when they're approved because. Legally, they can only be spent on what they asked for, and so, uh, Casey keeps those records on those forms, um. The other question goes, you have to delve into this, you know, that we delve into as part of this is what sort of fundraising are appropriate and and and. And why not, and so, you know, a number of years ago, we pushed out, we didn't like having all the elementary kids, you know, wandering around, even selling. Wrapping paper and try to minimize that and ask people to focus on fundraisers that were. Not as door to door, um, we get a lot of feedback about, about that and I think we've got. Times of what the community is pushing for, I think, the, um, if we can be able to see the same, um. Yeah, I do, I do wanna, there's one on, and and also, I mean, we have to worry about is also what the, what the return on investment is. Fundraisers that have a very low return on, that that are not so many, more challenging, um, so. Well, I did wanna call out, uh, just the discussion before you delve too deeply into it. Uh, we had the, this year we had the football fundraiser with, where they were requesting cash because it's a new one in our district and. I know some of us got some, uh, feedback on both the amount, purposes of that fundraiser and then also the. Uh, the fact that twenty percent goes to an outside entity that's processing it, so. Uh, being that it's on there for getting for next year, I think, more at least a discussion here, um. Before we, before we vote on it, just to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of whether or not that's something. Or whether or not we're gonna push that off, we've always stepped down to the basket for more details and pushing some of these off, like we don't wanna approve them, uh, tonight. But, that's what we're, so. This is, the feedback I got was just, and some people was just, it was a lot of money, it's cash, and then some people worry about, well, am I gonna ask again with my. With my neighbors in basketball or wrestling, and they get attracted, so I mean, sports are, are gonna do cash requests, um. And so, um, and then, I think some people raised the question about. Even if we go down this path, was the company we chose the best company because of the, the fee that was on it, we had this with, uh. Not for fundraisers, but with, but Danny remembers for applying on us, they went to one company that had a huge markup sales, on ticket sales, it's like. There are all these other companies that had much smaller ones and we went with one that had a huge markup that was being passed along and. Uh, we pushed back and said, you know, you can do this, but if you're gonna go with this company, you're gonna eat the cost of. Of that markup and so they they found a more, uh, efficient one, so I think. Those are some of the questions, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to.
So my question is just to push back a little bit and say, do we have a policy on this, do we really want the board to be pleased with this?
The board has delegated to Casey to approve individual ones, the board is charged by the law to make decisions about. Whether or not funds can be raised, so this is a board decision.
Board decision, whether or not funds can be raised for certain.
Purposes, yeah. Purpose and purposes and method, yeah. So, this is the, so this is, this comes to us because the.
How they raise the funds, is that something we please?
It is, that's the method of it, so, Dan will remember this, before we went to this annual one. Every month, we would have a list of them and every month, board president would get that. Oh, I forgot to file my fundraising request and we're, I'm funding it next month and bitchwob would have to go, yeah, it's fine to do it. And which is technically not legal, then we'd approve it the next month after the fact, and so, this was meant to simplify the process and say. Get all our ducks in a row and then delegate off the one offs, uh. Within a year and then they come, then they come to the board once a year to push through, so.
I see your point, I don't think the intent was to totally jump on everything, you know, pull it on the Casey. But just so we have a little more control that there's just not so many going out at the same time and we're hitting up everybody, you know, continually.
And that was the thing, like you, I mean, you remember when we first started, every kid came by, so I was just something. And, you know, and we, we offered back the like, we were over and over and over again. Um, and so, um, I don't have strong feelings about this, um. I do sometimes wonder if we're under user, under utilizing our booster club. And, you know, um, you know, would be some of these things. If that was robust, then a lot of these things go away or spotlight was more, you understand what I'm saying? You know, if funds are raised through other situations like that, I mean, like. We had friends that were at West High, right, and we went down for a giant pancake and egg breakfast in the fall. Cause that was their booster club fundraiser, you know what I mean, and so, my question probably is, you know, do. Are there other ways, you know, I mean, this, you know, yes, the heart house has more of that. But I can guarantee you, if you dive into a fun run and all this other stuff for fall sports or whatever. Do one big event, you do one big event and, you know, everybody gets behind it, all of this is the fall. You know, I'm just thinking out loud, but.
You know, I'm just thinking out loud, but then it's a good, it's a good point. It goes back and when we, you were normally started this, it was less than three pages of fundraising request of all the annuals for it now to page eight. Yeah. So we have lots of fundraisers that are going on. So our kids are going, are doing a lot to bring in money for programs. But I think that's always his back control, like, you know, it was, you know. By doing an individual fundraiser rather than a group fundraiser, individual coaches control that money rather than it being controlled and having your request. So you know, I I I just want to bring you the topic up for discussion. We can always, we can always push to with this and say, we want to have a discussion about how we might reform this moving forward. Today is not the night for that. For that sort of decision, we can't deal with that kind of regret. Every year the the list becomes a little bit longer and this does not include the list, you know, because Casey took out the, you know, a few years ago, we also had the red ones on there. And for the ones that go there skipping this year, well, those are removed off our list. So it's still eight page, on the eighth page, even with the ones that are on our history, you know, so.
But the norm today was different this list.
Yeah, Casey's asking us to approve the fundraising that our, the list here, the purposes looks good and like a nice. I think the other thing we probably do is we can probably move this forward. This is, this is an artifact of the old board calendar. Is it since the general because that's what the board used to be organized. This should be done in July, middle of summer because they know what the fundraiser is going to be. So it covers the whole school year round. It's kind of September, uh September. So this is successful. Other discussion, motion?
I mean, I I guess if it's now that I understand that this is a board decision, I don't feel like there's a lot of information for us to if we're supposed to go learn by line, like, what is the margin and?
Yeah, and that's all.
There's, I mean, I don't know, money raised for you things that are not necessarily clear. And I don't have any. Is this just for this year?
Yeah, well, this this approves it for the upcoming years. Office approved everything for the upcoming year. Casey in theory has the, has the, has the original application that gives the, gives the purpose on it. And when I've asked questions in the past, because sometimes it was without purpose, it also had a note, Chris, I mean, Chris contacts Casey and Casey sends additional information.
That far right column, we didn't have that until Tim asked. The last couple of years on the far right and at least they're telling us.
Yeah, some things I just stand there that's generic.
Yes, for sure.
Project raised for project or money raised for projects. Like is that what's in? I mean. Need to approve it, but if I feel like if I'm putting my junk out on something I have to like, I need to understand what I.
So maybe the finance, maybe the finance committee needs to get into what what does it should look like for next year? What we, what we want it to look like so that we have.
Well, here's the other thing is I don't want not having an improvement today to slow up anybody that's trying to get a fundraiser going.
I I'm with you on that. I I think, I think this is going to get approved tonight. I think the question is what? I think there's two aspects and one of which is, is there, is there enough detail for us to make a bunch decisions when you prove it? And the other is, is there a way to work with Booster Club? But spotlight PTOs to shrink the number of fundraisers because is, I'm sure that Ben loves to go out and raise funds and and go out and ask people for money. Because I know that's always everyone, everyone's favorite job is to go out and ask friends and family to give them money or buy it if they don't need.
Yeah, some of those you look at can drives and stuff, yeah, each line item for each can drive on a certain day, right? Those are all kind of in love, one love, some of the way I think of it. Yeah, so. Yeah, I I I'll make a motion to approve this list as presented and then we can certainly come back to this and that may be a a good idea to meet with Spotlight Booster Club. Just to kind of get our hands around, kind of move forward.
Yeah.
And see how we can kind of be a help in that.
Hey, it's kind of our point person in this, obviously, and and you know, obviously, you you heard our concerns tonight. And some of our thoughts, it would be, it would be nice for him to kind of look at what other possibilities there are, less of these, more like newer, bigger. Yes, correct. You know, and not that we're going to force that, but I think it might be time to revisit how we do this, how other districts do it. You know.
And each program, how many are you going to have, right? Not single, not football, but how many fundraisers?
Right.
And then some of those are showing up like camp, right? Because that's raising money. Every single camp somebody has, that's going into something. So it's being identified. So, yeah, we can again, I've made the motion and I I think we'll revisit this and
it might also be useful to cluster them. I like the fact that you did it by month because one of the concern I have is like, I don't know what is all going on. Because one of the things we were trying to manage that you didn't have ten fundraisers that all going on at the same time, door to door. Because we had, we had that for a while. We did it every September, everybody was out asking for money and it was all in the same couple of weeks. So, but we can cluster by the type of act, type of fundraiser there is as well. That is, I I need a second.
A second devotion.
Second, but well. Ben, how have you, how have you enjoyed doing fundraisers as a student over your many, many years in the district?
Um, I mean, honestly, this year wasn't that bad because we just received, we just did like this email thing and then we always go to Louisiana's good and I guess we do the making ups and that's always good, but.
They then calls.
Yeah, calls too. But, um. I haven't really felt overloaded by it yet, but yeah, it is better than we need to be.
Yeah. That that is good. The list looks, the list looks worse than probably, yes, but it just, it's a lot of it's a lot of fundraisers. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. We're supposed to discuss things sometimes, so that's good. Modified allowable growth for special education deficit. Well, this year we only spent two hundred, last year we only spent two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty seven cents more than the state and the federal government gave us to do special education. Which is much better than the six hundred thousand that it was when Davis got here. So the request for modified allowable growth is not money. I say this every time we do it. It is to get back to spending authority for the money that we already spent. So if the benefit someday we have that we turned four thousand dollars and was spending, we could spend it. Motion. Want to do, want to approve, you want to find a lot of growth first, special education deficit.
In the amount though.
In the amount of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars in eighty seven cents.
Certain.
Your motion, second, a discussion. Is there any way to drop this anymore, do you, so that then the state, the fed's giving us the money that they promised us?
You know, we're, we're about, we're about reaching the state average now. As far as, yeah, as far as what districts where they're at.
I think just to wrap it's a lot of this is a lot of this is, the feds never really honed up as we've been informed. They, they never really honed up the amount they promised with the pass the special education law. And so the state, the state portion definitely quite less than the fed portion, but we thank our local tax creators for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. RFP for audit services.
Do you recall, we put an RFP out last month, I believe, seven? Five, five different firms and we had one return. Same one, same one we've been using.
Five no responses, one, one return.
Thank you. She's, she's done a great job for us. We're, we're pleased to be working with her. She's very helpful too.
I did talk with Pat and our, our struggle is the reason, because I asked why this was only a two year instead of a three year lengthy role again. Her plan is to retire her at the end of the audit fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So
we, we are not the only district that, you know, we put out, you know, seven and we get one back and that is becoming more common across Iowa. And I'm starting to hear. I had some inquiries from the governor's office as far as is this an issue for you? And so I think they're taking note too. So I don't know what that means, but it's not just us with, you know, getting one return.
Well, that's kind of what I replied back to Pat. It was my deal is that was to shrink to the point now we only have one option.
Yeah.
What other district's going to do?
Well. There are, I I heard what she told me. There's, there was at least one district that last year had no auditor. No one responded and so they had to, they had to make arrangements with, with one of the government auditors to do what I think is going, but you know.
Just everybody did not have a business.
So. It's just not, you know. It not relevant to the final finals. I talked to one.
It's a lot of work.
The hourly reimbursement for when you get out of it is not particularly for your other type of work, you know. A lot of people who are just very, very hard to spot them. Rather than
Only can approve the RFP audit service proposal as presented.
A second.
Motion by Alaska, second by Ropos. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is the big one. Intermedia school addition good approval. Does everyone have a copy of the letter of recommendation? So I will turn it over to Adam and Jamie. Those are couple of projects. Anything you want to share?
So I don't know. Better than what we expected, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but even the highest bid that we got was a little under what we were estimating. So that is pretty exciting that we got.
So.
A little more wiggle room.
Yeah, so my thoughts are this, right? So we we put out these, let's say everything comes in.
Yep.
We have extra money. Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, then you just put marble tops in. You know what I'm saying? I mean, like, this is good problem.
Where you don't spend, yeah.
Or you don't, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Which, which is great about this very first project coming out of the chute with a million and a half left and what we're budgeting. It gives us breathing room because like you had mentioned earlier, when you go into a renovation, you just don't know what's, what you're going to run into. So we've got some breathing room.
That's what I was going to say. It covers us.
It does.
For the change orders that are bound back.
Absolutely. Yep.
And we're going to learn the way you absolutely the right way, you know, because the next three years or whatever that number is, we want to make sure we go the right way. It's our oldest building and get it up to standards and again, that breathing is like interesting.
Yes, it also gives us the option of having alternates in the, in the beds if if they're you know, we've had in the past, you know, assisted the alternate for the third grade wing. And we didn't have enough money capacity to do that. But you know, this may give us the option of putting an alternative in it, something that was part of our, our wants, our needs. But we want, you know, the, you know. So something that wasn't alternate may go into the base bid or something, you know, but we may have an alternate to there to try and.
Could this speed up another project to me? Could speed up another project that we have coming?
Possible, yes.
Yeah, but that next.
Do that order, yes.
We make the motion.
So accept the recommendation of.
Prove or accept the recommendation from ISG for the intermediate school addition good approval.
Motion by Ropos to approve the recommendation from ISG to award the hundred damars towards construction for a bid of seven million, two hundred and thirty thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by whom is? It's got me. Daniel, you want to discuss anything about spending seven million dollars, Mike?
A little out of my depth, right?
You can be all hard, they all are. But you can be fine spending seven million dollars, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
We did not, we did not increase your property tax levy to do either. So tell your dad.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. We're, we're moving on. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, SiAC advisory committee list.
Anybody want to replace me? Okay.
It's like the one that we have, we can hold it, it have half and half.
Yeah, male, female.
Probably have within close. Close. Right now, right now, we're, we're in that close range. I think we're two females up on the list, which I think is okay because it moves us one off of the one that even that we, we, last year we had a bunch of people that bailed on us and we had issues, you know.
There's not, I don't feel like there's enough parent representation. Is this just all because this is what we get?
The difficulty is, at one time, a couple of years, we, we tried to really increase this to almost like forty and really fill it with parents. But then finding, you can't get, you can't get or we, we can't get a forum because we don't get the attendance. So that's the difficulty in the Spain group.
And because of the board committee, you have to have half plus one to do business.
So I'm sorry to say that again.
Half plus one. So just like the board, we have to have three out of five here. So you have to have over half, over fifty percent of the side committee has to be.
But why do you need a forum? You don't vote on anything.
SiAC is a board committee and must have forum and must keep minutes and yeah.
We, we post our stuff.
And.
SiAC stuff.
Yes, wow.
I know.
Which is fine, but whatever, there was, nobody's voting, you're just.
Well. It, it all depends on how you there are, there are times when SiAC has made recommendations. So sometimes on the curriculum things that come up. SiAC has been asked to make recommendations. So it, it, it really comes down to what's on their agenda for a given year.
Okay.
And we've done it differently, Dan, when we, you know, the SiAC has been organized, you know, I mean, in this report before the year, you know, we have a time period where there was a where there were, where SiAC collected a chair and the superintendent and the admin were just advisory members of the board, of the committee and didn't actually participate. And so it's, it's varied over the, over my tenure on the board. You know, you're right, in the current, in the current mode, the current way of doing it.
I just, I just because one, two, three, four, five, five parents.
Well, there's more like the.
Some people have multiple roles.
And Cheryl has a multiple, yeah.
Yeah. But we could go back, we could go back one. We could go back to the other spreadsheet that we used to do famous, which is, which had all the categories that we're supposed to fill and then put a check mark in for everybody's, everybody's role like you know, Davis counts as superintendent as administration and as a parent. You know, so there's, there's different roles that people filled. But, you know, some of the teachers are teachers and parents. And so it's just about what faculty choose to wear that, like.
What, what'd you mention? Like Cheryl, she's built business, some of that.
Hey, Gordon's teacher and parent.
Which kid?
Flat out parent comes with a different perspective sometimes.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Can mean that. And then if you have only two, two, three people from that parent only group show.
Yeah.
Having been on the SiAC committee for about several years, it's it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't offer quite the voice of the community.
When's the first meeting? Uh, scheduled for the end of October, so it could, I mean, I could.
We can come back with, we don't have a first meeting till October thirtieth.
October, do you? Yeah.
So, or is it an option? We can approve this with the option to add additional parents.
That's what we did last year when we were off Dallas. We, we approved the initial list and then we added people.
Going to add people later.
Yeah.
That's my, that way you can get the communication going and get.
I mean, if it's easier, I mean, it's not a big deal. I can go, I can go back.
Approve this and then go back and.
That way you get the heads up that when the meetings are, you could start communicating with them, even if you're going to add some people on. Because there's only a small number that are 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 filtered, so.
That's.
And I think the important thing is, like everywhere, there are people that are invested, people that are here to show, people that are new. We, we just two years ago, relatively recently, the people yell about everything and I said, you're not going to cover any more of these. I said, so, and here was, you know, you so I'm like, well, thank you. Yeah, you like this. Which you know, they're saying, yeah, we haven't made a decision. But you know what I'm saying? I want people who are invested in, in want to, to, because we, we want to hear their voices. And give them the opportunity that a lot of people sign up and then.
And, and we'll send the letter out.
And you have to, you have to remember, we've done this different ways. Back in the day, we, we used to set out a notice and ask people to apply. But then we, then nobody applied. We'd say. But then we, then nobody applied, we'd say, I'm serious, like, we have nobody applying, and so it's like, we've got. We've got the science, like, everyone's, well, you're choosing these people and, you know, you're not representing the community, we want. More people on there, and so we set up a process where we could have more people, and we had applications, and they.
Well, I'll go recruit, and I'll find people. Yours, so we want, but.
All, all I'm told is never volunteer.
But I, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, I mean, you bring up a good point. I, you know. Sitting here on my third term, it, it been through numerous stages, we used to ask and no one volunteered. You know what I mean, and, and so it's just, I'm just speaking to that. Yeah, that's, that's, that's how this method came up, which is, we have that at SaAC. Either the board can go out and beg people, or we can put, ask the administration to ask people.
And I, and I said, oh.
Here, it's not, yeah, I think, I think maybe people just don't understand what is the commitment and what does it do and how does it make a difference?
And perhaps maybe what we can do is think about how we might better recruit, to have people reach out, because it is, it's an effort by the administration to convince people to do it. So if we can get people to volunteer, yeah, with that, it's, it's, it's better than having. Have Davis and Josh and the principal keep the bushes and say. And Holly's, I hear she'll say, Holly, you need to go find somebody from the elementary school, because if you're only, you're trying to get one parent from each of the buildings. Um, or her ass kids in each of the buildings, and so it's a, it's a, it's a, so let's think about how we might. We, we, we can set the, the committee that Cassie's on, that strategic planning committee.
Easy.
Hey, we're, we're, I, I've been under a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. SaAC membership approvals from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four.
Is that along with the referral to the, the strategic planning committee to come up with a better process for next year?
No, he's.
Not just talking what can we do.
Okay, motion. Motion approved second by Coons, any further discussion? Hearing not all of them in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries unanimously. You'll get bonus points for your dad not involved, for not having volunteered them, um. Information items, we have nothing on the list tonight, so you guys are lucky. Uh, board learning, we do have board learning, right? I'm watching. This is what all the, this is what all the administrators that don't have.
See you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. You're welcome to stay, just, just leaving.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah. So.
You should go send it to her.
I did send it to you, for ethical, Davis, I sent it to you on Davis to be, to be on one of the top of your emails. I have been communicating with you guys through email, kind of.
I've got half, half of one video.
You're done, you're done, Davis is done, Jamie's done. So this will be a bonus one, Dan's close, Cassie, we've talked.
I saw you're the listen.
You owe me what you've done, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I know.
I know, it's good.
But. I have a plan. Of those, you're out of the water.
I mean, driving or something, those are really good, the ones relevant to the.
What's been hard is the stuff they offer, you guys have done a couple times with, except for Cassie. You know, so it's, that's why.
The safety one, you've marked.
Oh, you did, nice work, that was a good one, Dan sent me that one.
Yeah, the safety one, another one, they, the guy talks to me. About communication.
Did you find it?
Yeah, that's, do you want, do you want?
Yeah.
So what's the PowerPoint?
Yeah, do you want just the?
Yeah, and then Tim has the wording of.
So you got the word, okay.
Yeah, he, I know he handles it.
Well, PowerPoint has all the stuff.
We work together, we work together, I guess, yeah, it's the best. It's all good.
Hey. Hey, we're gonna talk about ethical dilemmas for board member. We'll go to the next slide, because I have. So. Three parts, consider what's an ethical behavior, four scenarios for the board to discuss what's accompanied considerations from ISB, and then, what are some basic ethical principles we have discovered? Excellent. Hey. We're just gonna read along, I'm not gonna. Everybody read, what, how many fight ethics, okay? Uh, read the. Question in the box, well, they put it on the box to view ISB thoughts, is there a difference between what is ethical and what is legal? Absolutely. Everyone's nodding their heads, that's, that's a good thing, uh, what are, what are some examples of difference in relation? Of the difference in relation to school board work, so how? What's, what's something that's potentially not ethical but legal for a school board member?
For a school board member?
Yeah. More related to.
It's ethically okay but not legal?
No, legal, not, legal but not ethical. Things that can be legal, but. Probably shouldn't be done.
Um, probably being in the relationship.
Yeah.
With someone in administration.
No, not a teacher.
Sleeping with the music.
But that's a good point, there are ethical considerations that, which is. You always, you always refuse yourself when we approve the contract with the teachers, because. You know, it has a direct financial impact on you. Uh, could you, from a legal standpoint, vote on it? Yes, from an ethical standpoint, you've chosen to, to rest the board.
Anthony's always done a good job of that, right, any discussion, he'll sit out on that.
And good actually, or there's something to come up with, with your outside work to relate to this, you, you, you talk, you'll just refuse yourself in that discussion. Um, and that vote, and so it's a. Well, I, I think that things are important though, in this, is that. You can still be part of the discussion. It's just a voting part.
The voting, yeah, right.
It can explain why you would advocate for something, or any disclosure, what your conflict is.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts we can think of, or do we wanna find out what ISB thinks? Meeting with one. Committee in advance, how are you gonna vote? Before you know the facts? Legal but not ethical?
Yeah.
And we also have this one ISB sample, which is, you know, you really don't wanna come predetermined on. How you're gonna vote before all the facts are presented. This particularly comes in the case of when we deal with this student doesn't punish you or other things, which is, you know, you might have heard things around town or whatever. You don't know the full story until you, you sit down and it's in front of you. Um. Who else did that say?
Football makes sense, yeah, but. Looking sensitive that we can't all, like, be in this group.
Well, and not discussing school, you know, it's, it's a difference, it's like, you know.
Get us more, get better, whatever.
You know. You know. When the Coons boys graduate and, you know, we get invited to graduation party, we all stop by, but we're not talking about school stuff, we might all be there at the same time. But, you know, it's not about. It's not about school, we're not discussing school business. If, if we use the graduation party as a cover, as you would discuss, discuss school stuff, then that would initiate it. Let's all be, let's all be at Ben's graduation party, and you know, have a, have a party, that would be both illegal and unethical.
So just so he knows, that's why we have to have some of those subcommittees, like Jamie and I could work on some of the buildings and instructions that, where you don't have to have an entire board.
So if there's half plus one, three of us, we're in a forum, which means we can. Twenty-four hour notice and both of the minutes kept and, yeah, you know. Luckily, we all care for each other. We, uh, we had, we had a forum at the football game on. Friday night and I think probably two Fridays ago, uh, against CCA, I think we, I think we had a forum of the board at, at those games. I think you were at the, we were at the CCA game?
It's not fair.
I can, I can, I'm pretty used to you being with the colored guards, I think everyone. Okay.
But not be there.
I know, um, but yeah, okay. Why is it important for a board to conduct itself in an ethical manner as well as obeying one? I think one of these weird trust. If they see. Who knows, some of those. Um, back signing. Like, well, how that guy gives him a contract, or, oh, and he's pressing, we sell it, so, like, you know, some of those things. Uh, things that they do in the question. Yeah. You read ahead, respect and trust of the public. Okay, next one. Our scenarios.
Ready? Number one.
Number one. You're a school board member, your niece is going to be the subject of expulsion hearing. Your niece has told you she was not directly involved in the fight, she merely tried to help her best friend by reaching. In to stop the quarrel. What are your ethical considerations here? Ben? What do you think?
Oh, man, that's a.
Snowwell.
Oh, I don't know. That's a tricky one. Would you let the process play out, right? And probably stay out of, of the, one of those.
Yeah, it, it, it becomes that, it becomes that question, right, I, we had, we did this last week, this, I think, a big example of. I know. A friend, the neighbor whose kid was having, there was, there was a good conduct issue and. And. I was very, I'm like, I'm like, I can tell you what the process is. But as soon as you start telling me your side of the story, it means I will not be part of, part of it, I can explain to you what's gonna happen and what, what your options are. And I can do that, and then ethically still be there. So, just, you know, but as soon as you start giving me information, it's problematic, so for example, you know. You know, if, if, if it's your niece by marriage who you don't, you know, let's say you're in Davenport or DeMorn, and maybe you've got an extended family, it's like, I hardly know this kid. You know, the very nature raises the potential of appearance of, of an ethics violation. And you just have to be willing to, to stride that and disclose and then make a decision on it, or. Or is there an issue in terms of a conflict of interest? It's better to step back from an ethical standpoint, to, so you can remove the appearance of conflict. Um, but if you hate your niece, you know, that might be a difference, or you have to contemplate, you can remove yourself from the. The process.
What did he say?
Oh, there's more.
Sure.
You feel your niece is being treated very unfairly, and you should not lose your right to take part in the expulsion hearing as a school board member. You do not think you lose your rights as a school member just because you are involved in another family. That's where it comes down to, what best one to do, although you may be in partial. If it appears you're not in partial, do you want to avoid to? Not expel, and you're the side of it. Excuse me. You're the side of those, then, yeah.
And there's more.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That position.
Listen, more, Mr. Ben?
I've got more here on this. I've got allergies and I hate the loser, I hate the fall. I hate the outsides, I go back to my windows for my house, it always goes. Welcome troops.
That's right. Okay, Sarah, to your board member, your board just voted four, three, to privatize your transportation department. You are not on the prevailing side, you believe it will ultimately result in less convenience for parents. And maybe even less safe environment for students.
Yes.
That's. Or we can convert this to you hired story construction, and you are the losing side of a four, one vote. And field board has made a horrible decision. What do you do?
We've talked about that, right, but it's not fair, you move forward. There's no, there's no, so.
You have to support the decision, you disagree with the decision. But you have to not undermine the decision. The, the fight is to the vote, and then once the vote is done, it's, I'm doing.
Allegiance is to the, yeah.
Pressure clearly, and then once they can move on.
And continue.
If the other side thinks I'd be wrong, we can vote a little bit, years later.
Scenario three, yeah.
Renewally elected school board member, you are former chairman of the Keith Crease Open Committee, this. Who proposed the posing of race in all elementary school, that mission basically gotten elected. Since you've been on the board, you have received integration during the life, and now for any reasons to take, it's been less proposed. Probably a vote to close the school would be to let down all of the community supporters, what should you do? How should you vote?
Vote once ever is best for the. School.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'm seeing when you get on the board, you don't realize all the stuff that, you know, workings, how the budget works, right, I mean, we all have that, whereas, well, that doesn't make sense, cool. You get in and you actually see behind the curtains, uh, it makes the decisions a lot more difficult.
And I, I tried to do this, and it was on my new board thing, like, you just don't vote, yes or no? You, it was negative division. And then you say, this is why I'm voting this way, so. Knowing this incident with you, like. You know, I, I'm capable of position, and I'm close to school, but after. Learning this, it just financially, there's just no way to keep the school, to keep the rest of this program going, because of that, and everything.
I think that happened in Iowa City, they're not gonna, but they just, when you have those community elementaries, and you figure out that not a large percentage of the area actually goes into that, and it's a cash cow and everything else. It doesn't. Some of those that take that position, once you get in and you find out, um.
The difference of having all the information.
Right.
And you just have to.
David, let me just say, um, you have a saying on your board that I had Chris give me because I needed it. And I, you referenced it the other day, and said, don't judge yesterday's decisions by today's wisdom. And I love that, because. You have more information today than they say yesterday's decision. Actually wasn't a good one, I've been changing my mind, that's okay.
This is the reason, you know, the bad place, it's reasonable, after the motion, I always ask, is there any other discussion, because it gives you a chance, particularly if something's gonna be. Split. We go on the record by what you think and why, and it's, it's valuable, though. For the community to understand, you know, that it's not just you disagree, it's that, you know. Dan has one perspective and I have another, and, you know. And then, we go back, and we move on after that.
Three. Scenario four?
Yep. What? Who would do that? Move before. Yeah. That's right.
We're going on a.
Uh, what did you do, Dan?
What did you do, David?
Show me the money. Well, I already voted once to lose a bunch of money. You got free for everyone.
Yeah, that's right.
We were talking about that board meeting the other day, so.
I bet. Yeah, it's a basically. It's based on the stuff, and they explain why you think it's a good idea, but when it comes time to vote. And so you can vote. Hey, we have an ethics policy, it's a, it's a board policy. Two hundreds series. So we'll be going through that.
Yes.
It might be one of those, it's one of those. Um, that's what we went through that.
In the two hundred, yeah, so I have stuff started and ready, so whoever's on the board in November, I'll give you the manual.
Everyone says not yet, where's, where's the, not yet.
They're very, they're very thin. These are the two smallest policies.
So that, now everyone's gonna wanna be.
Yes, to say you did it.
Okay, um. Everybody looking at our ethics policies a little bit, they're selling, okay. Talking points. Ben. What are you gonna talk about? Football or seven million dollars or, you know? Dan's ethics.
Yeah, that's right. Um, I thought, I thought this was a very interesting meeting, definitely the, the best one I've been to, I'd say. Um. I'd like to talk about the tax stuff, and the students, I think she has done a great job, like I went through that program and. It was like, I just, I thought it was real good. Um, it was very stimulating and actually interesting, so, yeah, I thought it was, it was good.
Cassie.
Uh, I appreciated having someone that turned our board in his meetings and Jeff and what he spoke and we. Uh, offered insights that I think we would love to get more often, so I was really honored by that.
Scram, scram, scram away. I think for me, just, uh, to watch someone who's been administration for several years. Kind of went back to very means. And, uh, you know. Uh, be so into with the kids again, I'm sure it's, um, it makes. You sit, when you come back up, you're gonna sit in the central office and reforge you on. Why?
Sure.
Well, Cassie said what I was gonna say, and then Dan said what I was gonna say, so, um.
Now you're live, Bill, yeah.
I am really excited that we have someone along with this, with the. With the bins being so much lower, just because of, I mean, for all the reasons that we talked about, so that's really bringing for. For me, especially being on this committee, so. Giving us some flexibility down the road.
I'm gonna take a curve, modify a lot of our growth. I do remember when I was first on the board, that the numbers were much higher. Um, so again, that's word by the district, Davis, everybody, like, uh, significantly lower than if you go back and start looking at what it was. So, some good progress there.
Well, we covered most of the things that I was gonna cover, you know, between Dan and Cassie and Jamie, um. So, I, I'm really, in a high, I'm happy we're all here, I'm happy we're off to the, good, good start of the school year. I've seen lots of good things, lots of happy kids are floating around. I had two, two scouts that sold me popcorn last night, and they were ecstatic, they had, uh, they, they were in Carrie May's class, and they were just. They were all, all enjoyed, so it's great to see, as we go back to the school year, that, uh. Uh, kids are engaged, they're happy, uh, and, uh, not. Not big turmoil as we continue this early year, so I think that's a, that's a good thing to have it out. I'm happy you're all here, and we get to go, and some of them are more fun than others. Um. With that. Um, we are going to go into closed session, uh, in your motion.
I'll take a look at the, go in the whole session under Iowa code twenty-one, uh, yeah.
Motion by Ross, today, it's closed session, or Iowa close, second.
Hi, thanks.
Yeah, sure.
Second.
Motion by Walt, Walt Hall.
Walt, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Rocco.
Yes.
Coons.
Yep.
Weska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Ready?
Yep.
We are back for closed session at seven thirty-five P M. The entire board arranged presence along with. Josh Lyons, David Idol, and Chris Wenzing, our next regular, this Thursday, October ninety-two, twenty-three, five thirty P M, this occasion. Jamie had already let me know that she was coming out of town that day, uh, she's gonna run a few miles. And, um, if anybody else has got conflicts, please let Chris know.
The nineteen.
The nineteen. So we're making for him, um. With that, I want to make the motion to adjourn. Second. Second, I rock those. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion here, no, so.